I get there July 31st with the cats. Close on the house on the first, and Ken and the boys, and hopefully the moving trucks, or moving trailers will come down the third or fourth, or something like that. And then, of course, I have a drill that first weekend, so I gotta drive all the way over to Pensacola. So, but yeah, August 1st is my first day at work, but they're gonna be merciful, they'll be coming just for an hour or so, and then it'll be off and on the first week until we get... I got a Florida driver's license appointment on the first.
Oh, my goodness.
So, yeah, it's happening.
You're gonna drop it like a happy...
You mean, the kids, aren't they spending like the first week at Disneyland?
It's too hot. It's too hot to go to Disney in August.
You can go whenever you want, man.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
You gonna come back and visit sometime, or you just gonna disappear?
Well, we might. They're gonna come back for sure in November to be in a performance, and on cue. I can come back, I will. But it's more likely people from Cape will visit me in Orlando at Disney World.
That's for the winner.
Just to be honest about it.
Been there all year. Two times.
And there's NASA, and there's beaches, and all sorts of cool things.
You know, they're talking to your parents today, maybe about...
Ah! I'm not there once, and you're changing.
What time you got on your... What time you got?
It says 7:00, well, 6:59. That's actually pretty close now. It's been corrected.
It is pretty close.
I'd like to ask Pastor Bruce Baxter to come and give us our invocation. And while he's coming forward, we'll say congratulations to him. He's the new district superintendent for the Southeast District, United Methodist District. Bruce, congratulations.
Let us pray.
Your first job is to come to City Council and give us our invocation. You've always been blessed us with that in the past, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for Mondays, especially this Monday, and for the work of this council and all that lies before us. Lord, we give you thanks and pray for those who serve you in Cape Girardeau, for those who are first responders, for those who serve all areas in the public government and the private sector. Tonight, Lord, we especially thankful for those whose service we recognize, and we pray that you would guide the deliberations, guide the issues that come before us, those who are here tonight to speak and to observe the proceedings. And, Lord, we thank you for your hand upon us. We pray that you would give us wisdom, and that we might continue to be a model city, an example to others, a delightful place to live, and a wonderful place to serve. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the Pledge of Belief. Our Pledge of Belief includes a flag, an oath, a sacred promise, and two liberal obligations, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, Pledge of Belief. I'll call the order. This session of the Cape Girardeau City Council, this is our July 24th, 2017 meeting. Thank you all for being here. Roll call, please.
Wayne Bowen.
Here.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Gard.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Shelley Moore.
Here.
Harry Rediger.
Here.
Joseph Azur is absent.
Next agenda item is the adoption of the agenda, and as we discussed, was requested at our study session. That motion would be to approve it, and also removing item two, so we can send it to the senators, so we can run it. Okay, that's a good idea.
Aye.
Okay. Mixed emotions right now. Recognition of service for Councilman Wayne Bowen. So, Councilman, he will join me, and Scott, if you'll join me down in front.
Well, Wayne is, this is his last meeting with us. He's got an employment opportunity in Orlando. He didn't just quit and leave us. So, we say congratulations to him, and thank him for his years of service, 2013 in April through July 2017, four years plus. Wayne's been active on the council and in the community, and I'll point out, active on the Conference of Plan and Oversight Committee, the Joint Feasibility Study Committee, and most recently on the Board of Cape Area Committee Board. A member of the Chamber of Commerce in the community, Cape County Republican Club, CMO Pacadoran Club, Cape Girardee Rotary Club, Bell Rotarian, American Legion Post 63, the Welfare Association, and it goes on. Wayne, with council and staff, we've had a lot of accomplishments over the last years, just in your four-plus years. A lot of them during your tenure with the cooperation and the hard work of staff and all the council. We can all be very proud of that. But from day one, you have been the champion of public safety. You came in that way, you ran that way, and you've always been the champion of public safety. And I've just jotted down some things that you probably had more to do with. I think we were all involved in a lot of these things, but you probably had more to do with what I'm gonna read now than some of the other council, including me. Approval of fire tax. Set radio interoperability as a priority. Implementation of electronic ticketing. Increased funding for additional public safety staff. Renovations of fire stations one and two, part of the fire tax. Building a new maintenance annex. And, of course, now of a new fire station number four and a new police station would help that you will spy Southwest back up here and be here for the ribbon cut. But you've always been a champion of public safety. We honor you tonight for your service. You've been a great colleague, and was very straightforward with all of us and with staff. We appreciate that. We appreciate your service. And with that, I'm gonna present you, City of Cape Girardeau, in appreciation and recognition for your years of commitment, service of City of Cape Girardeau, Wayne Bowen, City Council Member, 2013 to 2017. And we've probably gotta have a picture. We wish him the best in his career objectives, and also Godspeed as he uproots a family. I've done it several times myself, and it's challenging. So, you have opportunity and you have challenges, but we do wish you Godspeed in the future. And I think you have some comments that you want to, during the communications that you want to do, so congratulations again. Thanks.
Now, we have a returnee, Buddy Davis, and the family. I've heard this pitch before from me, but as we recognize people of service and people who retire, it's not just the employee, but the spouse, whether it be male or female, that puts up with a lot, and listens, and hears, and supports. And a career isn't a career without all that support, so that's why you're standing here together, and we appreciate you. I've got a cheat sheet here, and I've highlighted some things. You began in law enforcement at the age of 18, deputy sheriff in Wayne County Sheriff's Department. In 81, moved to deputy with the Butler County Sheriff's Department, and came to Cape Girardee Police Department as a patrolman, July 28, 1986. Wow. Over 30 years at Cape Girardee.
Would be 31 tomorrow.
31 tomorrow. 31. 1990, ranked sergeant, and in July of 1995, I'm sorry, and assigned as supervisor of the traffic division. 1995, he received a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice. May 1998, completed requirements for a master's of science degree in administration. Buddy attended FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia in 2000. He was promoted to lieutenant in December 2000. In April 2006, ready to transfer to the patrol division, appointed as a patrol manager. He was appointed to the position of interim captain and oversight of functions to the Operations Bureau, serving the officer in charge of the patrol division, March of 2014. July of 2014, transferred from the patrol division to the supervisor of the Resoury Services Division. Lieutenant Davis was assigned to oversee the building of a new police station. During his tenure with the Cape Girardee Police Department, Lieutenant Davis has been recognized by members of the community, criminal justice educators, and other law enforcement officers, defense attorneys, prosecutors, and judges for his high professional standards that are reflected in the quality of his work. He's qualified the department's motto of commitment to excellence. Wes, would you come up and stand with us as I present? In appreciation and recognition of over 30 years of loyal and faithful service to the City of Cape Girardeau, presented this 24th day of July 2017 by the City of Cape Girardeau in honor of the retirement of John R. Buddy Davis from the Service of Police Department, 1986-2017. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Buddy has never lied for work, so that's all I say.
Well, today I am. This is a wonderful city. I have been blessed to get to work here, blessed to work with all the people I've worked with, great bosses, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're not letting him totally go yet. He's got the pass to build. I thought that something like that might come up. Okay. Professional Engineers Day. Come on up. We have this proclamation. Whereas licensed professional engineers use their scientific knowledge, mathematics, and ingenuity to develop solutions to spur progress while holding the paramount of public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas the licensed professional engineer in the Southeast Chapter of the Missouri Society of Professional Engineers makes significant contributions on our local, state, and national scale. Whereas our local, state, and national economy and sensory have benefited beyond measure in part because licensed professional engineers help change the world by testing the limits and finding the norm, and taking risks to make the best use of the earth's precious resource. Whereas August 7, 2017, we will celebrate it as Professional Engineers Day, by the Earth Society of Professional Engineers, in conjunction with the National Society of Professional Engineers, founded in 1934, to represent licensed professional engineers and those on the path to licensure in all 50 states and U.S. territories. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Harry Rediger, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardee, and the Honorable Leader of the Senate, I proclaim August 2, 2017, as Professional Engineers Day, the City of Cape Girardee calling all citizens to join me in this special observance and witness their wrath. Thank you for all you do. We thank you. And you have a very good year. They come over here and look at Nicolette.
Hi there.
You know the drill, Moore. There we go.
Yep. Thank you.
Looks like they got the podium before I even... They are so...
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about the Essential Air Service bid options and recommendations. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the EAS program, but for those in the audience who are watching on TV tonight, the Essential Air Service Program is a program that was put into place in 1978 after deregulation, and the program was intended to guarantee small communities served before deregulation maintain a minimum level of scheduled air service. So, every couple of years, the Department of Transportation puts out a request for proposals for air service to our airport. Before I go through the presentation, I would like to recognize our board members that are here this evening, and our airport manager, Bruce Loy. This process is very time-intensive. It takes a lot of commitment on the parts of our board members. They've spent countless hours going over the proposals that we've received. There are a lot of complexities to this process, a lot of rules and whatnot that have to be understood, and these gentlemen have put in a lot of time to make sure that their recommendation is the best interest of this community. So, I just would like to recognize them for their time and commitment. So, I'm gonna quickly go through the process and the bids that we received. In May of this year, the Department of Transportation issued a request for proposals to provide air service to our airport, as well as Quincy, Illinois, which was also up for bid. The proposals were due on June 15th, and we had overwhelming responses this time with five air carriers responding to the RFP. Last time, we had two, so this was a significant increase from that. Over the course of July 11th to the 17th, the Airport Board and staff interviewed those carriers. Very creative and interesting proposals from all of those carriers, and we had a lot of options to consider. On July 18th, the Airport Board unanimously recommended to this board and to the Department of Transportation to go with SkyWest Airlines for service from Cape to Chicago O'Hare. Community preference is one of the criteria that the Department of Transportation looks at when considering an EAS carrier. There are actually five criteria that the Department of Transportation looks at when making a selection. One is the demonstrated reliability of a carrier. Two are any contractual relationships between that carrier and larger carriers for code shares and things like that. So, when you go look for a flight, it will say Cape Girardeau, and you'll see United will take you all the way through. Interline agreements between the carrier and other airlines, larger airlines, so your baggage can easily transfer when you get to that hub airport. Community preference, which I already mentioned, as well as marketing plans to promote that carrier within the community. It should be noted that Cape Girardeau is currently entitled to twin-engine, two-pilot aircraft service per statute, so we cannot select a proposal for a twin, excuse me, a single-engine carrier without the community affirmatively recommending that, and also waiving our right to a twin-engine, two-pilot aircraft in the future. And three of the carriers that proposed service to Cape Girardeau proposed doing so in a single-engine aircraft. And while their proposals were very creative and very exciting, staff on the Airport Board do not think that going with a single-engine carrier is in the best interest of our community at this time. I will briefly go through all of the proposals that we received, and then go through why we believe that SkyWest is the right airline for Cape Girardeau. And I don't know why my... Thank you.
Put it on.
We'll just have Nicolette for me. Go ahead. Those are the criteria I just went through. More. Okay, so the first carrier we received is Air Choice 1. They are a St. Louis-based carrier. They operate 12 single-engine Cessna caravans in an eight-seat configuration. They provide service to seven EAS cities from two hubs, both St. Louis and Chicago. They currently do not have any baggage, or ticketing agreements, or code share agreements in place, and they proposed two options for us. One is four round trips daily from Cape to St. Louis, and then also two round trips from Cape to St. Louis, and two from Cape to Nashville. The next proposal was from our incumbent carrier, Cape Air, which has been an outstanding community partner for us for several years. They are based out of Hyannis, Massachusetts. They operate 91 aircraft. They fly Cessna 402s and provide service to 39 cities, including 23 EAS cities. They do have a code share agreement in place with American and JetBlue, and ticket and baggage agreements with other carriers that will grant them. They propose the same service that we currently have for daily round trip flights to St. Louis from Cape. They are the other twin-engine carrier out of the ones that we received. Next, we have Boutique Airlines submitted a proposal. They are a San Francisco-based carrier. They fly Pilatus, PC12s, and King Air aircraft. They provide service to 30 cities, including 17 EAS cities and 13 hubs. They do have a ticket and baggage agreement with United and are moving forward with a code share agreement with that airline as well. Boutique provided the most options of any of the carriers. I believe we had 11 different options, different configurations that they proposed, and with some destinations that we haven't seen previously, like Nashville and Atlanta. So, they had a lot of different considerations for us to look at, but again, a single-engine aircraft. Next, we had Southern Airways. They are a Memphis-based airline, operating Cessna caravans. They currently provide service to 13 EAS cities from four hubs, Baltimore, Dallas, Fort Worth, Memphis, and Pittsburgh. They do have baggage and ticket agreements in progress with American, and they also provided some different options for us that we hadn't seen before, including round trips from Cape to St. Louis, which we currently have, but also providing service to Nashville, and an unsubsidized flight to Memphis. And that is simply because Memphis is one of their hubs, and they need to take the planes back there for maintenance nightly. The other option they provided us was for the four round trip flights to St. Louis. Last, we had the proposal from SkyWest Airlines. SkyWest is an airline based out of St. George, Utah. They currently operate 407 regional jets in both 50 and 76-seat configurations. They are proposing 50-seat configuration for service to Cape. They have service to 230 destinations, including 23 EAS cities. They are fully integrated with American, Delta, and United, operating aircraft for all of those airlines, and ticket and baggage agreements, as well as code share. They provided one option for us to consider, and that is two round trips daily to Chicago O'Hare, one of those being a direct flight and one that would stop in Quincy, Illinois. You can tell just from the difference of going over this very briefly is the connectivity that SkyWest provides. There are numerous destinations that SkyWest flies to, and when you look at the connections that you can pick up in Chicago O'Hare through their partners, United, Delta, American, and Alaskan, and if you keep looking at the map and look at all the various options, essentially you will be able to go from Cape Girardeau to anywhere in the world, essentially. So, this is really an opportunity for us to grow our service here from Cape Girardeau, and again, it'll be flying United Express, you'll be flying United from Cape Girardeau to essentially anywhere you would like to go. There are also advantages to having a regional jet. They are fast, they fly over 500 miles per hour, they are comfortable, they have a flight attendant, they have a lavatory. It's like a very comfortable experience. Also, you'll see that those communities that SkyWest has gone into, that had previous carriers, have seen their employments grow significantly. And something that we talk about frequently when we're looking at carrier service is how do we reach 10,000 employments? That's the magic number that gets us access to a million dollars of airport improvement funding each year. So, we've had a difficult time reaching that number, especially on a nine-seat plane. It's very difficult to achieve that number. SkyWest gives us that opportunity, and we are hopeful, based on their performance in these other communities, that we will also be able to achieve the 10,000 employment mark and have access to those improvement funds. Here's a picture of the CRJ, the 50-seat passenger jet that would be providing service from Cape to O'Hare. There are some other advantages to going with SkyWest. For example, annual fuel sales would reach almost $170,000 annually. In comparison to Cape Air, we currently average about $37,000, $38,000 in fuel sales with Cape Air, so there'd be a significant increase in fuel sale revenue by going with SkyWest. In addition, we will have some additional revenue from office rental, ramp fees, landing fees. So, our total expected revenues from going with SkyWest exceed $200,000 annually, over $400,000 over the course of their two-year contract. There are some costs associated with going with a larger aircraft. One cost is having our airport rescue firefighter apparatus, vehicle on standby at the airport 20 minutes before and after each flight. Currently, that apparatus is stationed at Fire Station Number Two. We will have to have personnel drive the truck out to the airport before and after each flight twice a day. We believe that we can accomplish that through a combination of voluntary overtime and part-time help, but there is a cost associated with that. In addition, there are some live-fire training requirements now going with the larger airline. We will also have to increase the size of our secure holding area in the terminal and add some additional terminal seating to accommodate the additional passengers. We do have some one-time expense for those terminal enhancements, which total about $18,000. However, the revenue that this airline agreement will generate exceeds what these costs total. So, there are multiple reasons why the Airport Board recommended SkyWest as Cape's next EAS service provider. They are a multi-billion-dollar regional airline, providing over 2,000 daily flights. They have reliable service on time, and they are fully integrated with their network partner, United. They generate strong traffic results, as demonstrated in their other cities, and they have remained compliant with the $200 subsidy per passenger cap. They have an EAS marketing program and team available for consistent marketing throughout our region. They offer more available outbound seat capacity than any other carrier, over 23,400 seats annually. And of those, we need 43% to reach that 10,000-seat employment, which generates that $1 million in airport improvement program revenue for the airport. So, we are very excited. Again, a lot of hours went into this recommendation. There was a lot to consider, and I believe that the Board, the staff, and I'd also like to recognize John Maynor with the Chamber for attending all of the interviews. They also conducted a survey of Chamber members to see if there was a business preference for destination, aircraft size, and things of that nature as well. So, again, a long process, but here we are this evening, and it is with pleasure that I give you the Airport Board's recommendation for SkyWest for our next EAS provider. And myself, Mr. Loy, or the Board would be happy to answer any questions. And myself, Mr. Lloyd, or the board would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Could you address fares and the various fares? I know there weren't several, I guess there are several, depending on packages.
Right. And I believe that's something that SkyWest is currently still working out. They had one fare listed in their actual proposal that doesn't include taxes and fees and things of that nature as well. So I think they're still trying to refine that. I believe we're trying to keep it below...
Trying to keep it below $100 each way. So I would estimate it $87 to $95 each way, in that range. Currently, Paducah is, I think, at $201 or so round trip, and SkyWest says so that we should be less than that.
I have some questions.
So if, for example, SkyWest's expected bookings do not materialize, let's say after six months to nine months, they're way below what they had hoped to be and way below, you know, what some of their predictions here tonight, at what point, if any, in that two-year cycle can they opt out or we opt out, or is it guaranteed for those two years because of the EAS subsidy?
They are under contract if they're selected by the Department of Transportation to be our carrier for two years. That's not to say that a carrier has never breached that contract in the past, but certainly they are under obligation to provide that service to us regardless of what their employments are. If we started to see employments drop, we would certainly work with them to try and figure out if there's something that we need to do from a fare structure standpoint, a scheduling standpoint. We've done that with Cape Air.
I think it's very doubtful that you still would just set it up, he was outside, especially when you only have a two-year contract. Typically, they, once they realize you might be over, as an example, $200 subsidy gap, they would give you at least a year to make that work. The only reason I would see any issue at all with SkyWest themselves would be if there was some issues with the Chicago gates. That's what we've advised. Just to give you one example, though, Hayes, Kansas is an example of one EAS airport, probably the, I understand the only EAS airport that SkyWest has served that has not just gone right over 10,000 right away, and I think they are at 8,000, if I'm not mistaken, right now. But they, SkyWest did elect to redend them, and they submitted proposals to them regardless because they said, "We saw growth. We've just been not as fast as growth that we see with the majority of our markets." But I was impressed by the fact that they did go back and want to serve that community again, and have a much smaller community.
Because I've flown Cape Air repeatedly and thought they provided excellent service, and the only problem I had is occasionally they run out of seats, which is a good problem. So, you know, that's my concern here. We're committing to an upfront capital expenditure to accommodate their need for, both in the terminal and so on. And in a year or two, they could say, "Well, it didn't work out. We, you know, we've underperformed the city in Kansas. We know we can fill the capacity that Cape Air provides because we are and have been pretty consistently." So that's...
With Cape Air and all these others that you mentioned, there is no way in the world we never get our capacity, well, to get our ability to fill $10 employments.
So could you explain a little more the primary airport status and what, you know, we've talked about that before as an objective, but what meaningful impact would that have for the city and the airport?
The most important thing, basically, when you're under 10,000 employments, you are considered non-primary, and you, the FAA, you, basically, when you're non-primary, like we are, we work directly with the Missouri Department of Transportation. When you go primary, when you go over 10,000, now you're working directly with the central region, FAA central region out of Kansas City. Doesn't mean that we don't talk with both of those either way, but the top for a few of the funding that we get, all of a sudden, instead of $150,000 guaranteed money when you're non-primary, when you get over 10,000, we would have, we would have $1 million guaranteed annually. Obviously, I have, both of those examples have 10% matches, you know, for any kind of grant programs that we would do. That's the biggest difference.
So I understand Quincy's rejected the proposal from SkyWest. Do you have any idea why they did and what impact that would have? I understand community was only one factor, but still, it's a factor.
Certainly. I, it is true that Quincy's Aeronautics Committee did recommend Boutique as their preferred EAS carrier. All of these recommendations will be presented to DOT, and it will be ultimately their decision on how to award service to both of our communities. I don't think that we can speak to why Quincy went that direction. Of course, we believe that their committee was doing what they thought was in the best interest of their community. I think that destinations might have been a part of it, but without, obviously, being a part of their process, it's difficult to speculate on why they went that direction.
Does DOT frequently overrule community preference?
They have that ability based on the five criteria. They will look at subsidy. They will look at those other criteria as well when making their...
But do you know if they ever have? Because I guess it's...
Yes.
Yes, they have. And I want to add that, oh, that they, well, they submitted, and now they're going to have to resubmit, by the way, that they submitted to US DOT, just simply said, "We want Boutique." Our understanding and through the media and through the airport manager was that they wanted a $3.2 million proposal to provide six round trips between, from Quincy to Chicago and St. Louis. Problem is, there is no such proposal in Boutique's proposed plan. They told, they told the commission that they could upgrade a five-round-trip proposal, six-round-trips, and the DOT has advised me that they can't do, they obviously can't do that. You can provide on the service table of the proposal. In other words, if you've asked for a $3 million subsidy and that's a part of your package, you can change where you go and how you go, that sort of thing, as long as you keep the amount the same. You can't upgrade, which they did. They went from roughly 2.7 to 2.8 million to 3.2 million. And now DOT says, "I don't know what we can do with that because there is no such proposal." But the matter of the fact is, the letter they submitted doesn't even have that. It just said, "We want Boutique." Today, we received a letter from them asking both of us to hold off on our letters until they can get some information, guidelines for letters, so they don't have to go through this again. So basically, if they want Boutique, then one of the things, they have to submit a letter in writing to them saying also that they are waiving their rights to twin-engine aircraft in the future. So there's a lot to still be done there, I guess is what I'm saying. It's a little bit confusing right now. And so that's the reason we think, hold strong, ask for what we want, because if you ever know we can still get it.
Could we, for example, submit for SkyWest but indicate Cape Air is a strong second or alternate in case the SkyWest is unable to service both destinations? Maybe that's something we can empower our city manager to do if it comes to that?
We could do that, but I wouldn't recommend it right now because I have asked DOT if we don't get this, what they would do. They say, "We will simply come back to you and ask you to consider a second choice." And in that case, I would ask for a little bit more time so that we can go through all this again briefly. These guys are, these guys are going to do a lot of house. But yeah, that's...
Not go back, not go back to the airlines, but just meet with your board again and kind of figure out where everything is that time and then come back.
Right.
Molly, Bruce. Bruce, thanks the airport board for all the time you put in this, because I know it took a lot of time, a lot of meetings, and a lot of thought. I think it's a no-brainer to go with SkyWest because if we're ever going to have a chance to get above 10,000 boardings and ever have increased funding for our airport, and we're ever going to have a chance to do the improvements to that terminal and the airport that we need to do, we've got to get above 10,000. With those other proposals, you don't have that chance. Not with the number of flights, not with eight or nine seats, Philto Max every time. You still don't have a chance. At least with this, you've got a chance. And if they're halfway good at marketing, you can't compare Hayes, Kansas and Cape Girardeau metropolitan areas, I mean, just the area around it. We vastly outnumber Hayes, Kansas. Nothing against Hayes, Kansas, but it's just a lot smaller community, a lot smaller area. But if they market this around southeast Missouri and other places, and it gives people the connectivity that it does and the chance to be with three major airlines and fly anywhere, which you cannot do out of St. Louis now, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I would say so too, that this gives our, this gives us a chance to upgrade our airport, to upgrade for our citizens. And this is our chance to get to that, to that 10,000. And we desperately need some more money for the airport. I guess everybody agreed with that. And this is, this is the opportunity to do it. And to me, I would strongly support recommending SkyWest and let SkyWest and the consumer decide. Let them decide. We've got a two-year contract. If that is a wanted service, we'll get there. If it isn't quite there, and SkyWest can see the value of our community and our airport, they can get in there. So there's opportunities to, as Councilman Fox said, there's opportunities both ways to do this, and I think this is our chance. I'm just very proud and thankful that they considered Cape Girardeau. We need to react to that with the support.
SkyWest proposal be attended upon Quincy? Will they pull out? Will they re-propose? What are they going to do if Quincy prevails?
According to the proposal that is continued upon Quincy, I am hoping that they might reconsider some other options. We'll certainly give it every shot we can, but if, in fact, you know, he can't do that, SkyWest can't do that, we'll just go back and go for a second shot. The good news for me is, I mean, I think it's very important that we show SkyWest that we want to recommend that, because if this should happen, then in two years from now, we can go say, "Hey, we'll always talk to them as well for that." But don't forget, we wanted you guys to get it because of another community. Please reconsider another proposal, and that's, that's why it's so important that we recommend it.
Yeah, I'm saying that we don't need to bother with Quincy. We need to do what we want to do. We want to accept what we want to accept and let Department of Transportation deal with, and SkyWest, how they're going to deal with that. They need to come back to us for something else. We can deal with that at that time.
I agree.
24,000 boardings you were talking about, was that based upon Cape Girardeau alone?
That was 24,000 outbound, correct?
That's outbound. It's actually 46,000 made for 800, state and both programs. Actually, it's outbound.
Yes.
It's outbound, yeah.
We were talking about other communities or areas. Just for some piece of my, Paducah is planning these same flights. They're putting about 22,000 employments every single year.
Good point.
Come again?
They're planning on 22,000 employments this year.
22,000 people here on the same flight, on the same airline, same exact airplane.
On your graph, when you gave your presentation, you showed several airports that had boarding below, well below 10,000.
Right.
The last one, I think, if I read it correctly, was Meridian, Mississippi?
Yes.
They went from less than 5,000 boardings to over 25,000?
Right. I can't, I wish I could tell you what the time limit was on that, but...
Well, I don't know where Meridian, Mississippi is. I'm not sure.
There's 25,000 down there.
1,000 people ride 25,000.
Those are all one-way flights, though. They're all leaving.
They're all leaving.
Okay, council, any other, any other questions? I too want to echo Councilman Fox with the airport board, one of our very important boards. I know they spend a lot of time, and they spend a lot of extra time in this process, and we do thank you. We do appreciate you. We do appreciate you. Okay. Okay, council, I think we will go right now to item number 11. And I'll read it. Bill number 17-114, a resolution authorizing the city manager to make recommendations to the United States Department of Transportation for SkyWest Airlines to provide air carrier service under the essential air service program at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport.
So moved.
So moved by Fox.
Second.
And seconded by Guard. Discussion. We've had considerable discussion. Is there more?
I would just like to encourage staff to keep Cape Air in mind as a strong alternate. Should there be any issues or should Quincy be allowed to veto this with the Department of Transportation and successful in their effort that Cape Air has been a great partner for the city of Cape Girardeau?
Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Done. Now, you said, Bruce, you're on a holding pattern now with the DOT?
Yes. You were supposed to gotten a guideline there. I'm going to call you if you want any questions.
Okay. Very good.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay. Communications and reports. This Saturday at River Campus, Sounds for Hounds with Jerry Ford and Associated Stars. Going to be a great concert. $12.50, 7:30 at the River Campus. I encourage our citizenry to go and use that venue. It's going to be a great concert. All those and the sponsorships all go to our K9 project that has been going on since the first part of the year, and this will be the culmination and the completion of that project. The numbers coming in with sponsors and ticket sales indicate that this is going to be a very successful event, and encourage citizens to react to that. Tickets available at the River Campus box office. And we'll lift up, it's way off yet, October, no, the August 20, got a tie on, 21st of August, 1,300 hours, 20 minutes and 19 seconds. Will be dark. Really don't know what to expect, but I think we're going to get more than, rather than less. Lot of excitement around the area, region, nation for the eclipse, so we'll talk more about that. We have plans at, university has plans at HAWK, and city has plans at Sportsplex and others. Will be a kind of a once-in-a-lifetime event until 2024. We get it again, I guess. Any other council? Wayne, go ahead.
I'd just like to say that I'll be out of town. Event I can't ignore, or I would be at the Dog Concert. But I'd like to encourage the listening public and anybody else that they go and support this. I have experience with Canines, not that I was a K9 handler, but our department had them, and they save lives. They save citizens' lives. They save officer lives. They search and rescue. They have so many uses. I've been present when they found burglars that we couldn't find because they had a nose that could smell them out. And I encourage this community to support this with all my heart. So if you can make it, please do. And I'll support that with a check to West to help. Thank you.
He'll be waiting.
He'll be waiting.
They'll see you after the meeting. Now, I'm going to turn the mic. Before you do that, I just want to say a personal thanks to Wayne for his dedication, his desire, and I only hope that whoever we select from Ward Six has your passion. I was going to go around a little bit afterwards, but Bob hit me with it. So Wayne?
Okay. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. And first, let me thank the voters of Ward Six who twice awarded me the privilege of office with 97% votes. It's easy to get that when you don't have an opponent. But I did promise to hunt down those 12 people who wrote in other candidates, but that'll remain a broken promise. I apologize for that. It's been an honor to serve on the city council alongside an exemplary mayor. Mayor Rediger, you've been just the leader the city needed over the past few years, and I'm grateful for your service. We've agreed probably 90% of the time, and even during that 10%, I believe we approach our differences with goodwill and what was best for our city. We've agreed probably 90% of the time, and even during that 10%, I believe we approach our differences with goodwill and what was best for our city.
Absolutely.
To my fellow council members, thank you. Thank you for being willing to serve the people of Cape Girardeau. The rewards for public service are most often not tangible, and if you look at our checks every month, you definitely know that's the case for us. But in the feeling of seeing real results for our neighbors in real time, something that you don't see at state or federal level. And then also leaving behind an improved city after our time is over. It's been a joy to serve with council members who cared more about our city than their own reputations or personal gains. Also, let me extend my thanks to Scott Meyer and the excellent staff of the city. I appreciate your endurance of my questions, and I did ask a few more tonight. And hope you receive them with, with my intent, which is to make everything we do as a city better. I would never want to have seven bosses, Scott, so I appreciate that you've been able to forbear all of us simultaneously. I first ran in 2013, dedicated to three main areas: improving public safety, supporting downtown revitalization, and continuing the overall economic growth of our city. And while I wish we could have done more in each area, I believe we're stronger in all of them. We now have more police officers and more firefighters. But I would encourage the council and staff to continue not only to add more of each, but to pay them what they deserve. We have an award-winning downtown and a more supportive relationship with Old Town Cape, but I want to encourage the ongoing nurturing of the bond with Old Town Cape and our downtown partners. We're a model on how to make magic happen and save, save a city in what had been a declining downtown, but let's not have to relearn that lesson. I believe the economy of our city is also stronger. Partnerships, not rivalries, with our neighboring city through Magnet, the Cape and Jackson Chambers, and intergovernmental discussions, and public-private partnerships with large and small companies have helped us continue to be a remarkable success story through the Great Recession and national threats that have crippled similarly sized cities. Take nothing for granted in our status as a regional hub. Also, let's continue to build a sense of spiritual community even as we build our fiscal and physical community. I was so proud, along with Councilwoman Moore, to be a part of renaming Courthouse Square for the Iris, Iris family. And I just hope that we continue working together for reconciliation and a, and a spirit of togetherness even in our differences. And then finally, I want to encourage more debate, more questions, more discussion on the council with staff and with members of the community. People of goodwill can have legitimate differences of opinion and then work to compromise. I've tried to model that approach, haven't always succeeded, but I hope I've helped at least move us a little in that direction. So to all the citizens of Cape Girardeau, I want to leave you with the words of the prophet Jeremiah from 29:7. Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you into exile. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper. I'll continue to pray for Cape Girardeau and would ask for any that would honor my request that they also pray for me and for my family as we begin this new adventure in our lives. Thank you.
Again, said it before, but Wayne, as a friend, congratulations on your move. I know it's with mixed emotions, because it's happened to me before, but Godspeed and you're, with you and your family as you move on. Anyone else? Okay. Any other council communication?
I got one.
Okay.
I want to say a special thank you to City Clerk Gail Conrad for fixing this up so that I could FaceTime in from 1,000 miles away. Thank you, Gail.
Working like a charm, Robbie.
Oh, it's great.
Very good. Got it done. Very good. Staff?
I believe Kevin Preister with Alliance has an introduction of a new staff member you wanted to make on Professional Engineers Night.
I'm a student from a few months ago. This is Eric, seems to like this as utilities engineer, but should be working primarily in GIS or for now anyway. So in spirit of cooperation that Wayne mentioned, she's from Jackson.
Welcome.
Jackson's our friend.
Anything else? That's it. Okay. We have no public hearings tonight. Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is on the agenda? Okay. Eric, if you will read the consent agenda, less the other item removed, and also item two.
Number 17-100, ordinance accepting temporary construction easements for the Boxwood Drive/Box Culver Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting temporary construction easements for the Boxwood Drive/Box Culver Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-102, an ordinance granting special use for Metta Kits Incorporated for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a vehicle fueling station at 1325 Broadway in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance granting special use for Metta Kits Incorporated for purposes of constructing, maintaining, and operating a vehicle fueling station at 1325 Broadway in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-101, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a pedestrian crossing agreement with Dory Hotels Company LLC for the installation of roadside flashers on Farrar Drive in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-103, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with the Volvo Software Corporation for online plan submission and plan review software in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-104, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Gersoner Electric Inc. for the 2017 LED streetlight conversion project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-105, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Nip Kelly Equipment Company Inc. for the Lexington Drive Avenue Improvements Project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 17-110, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a subordination and deed and trust agreement with Dietrich Financial LLC for property located on 308 Lewis Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Council, you've heard the consent agenda, less item two. Do I have a motion for approval? By Bowen? Seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And Eric, if he'll read item two.
Number 17-99, an ordinance granting chapter five of the Code of Ordinances to Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding alcoholic beverages.
And again. You can do it, too. I've done it several times.
An ordinance granting chapter five of the Code of Ordinances to Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding alcoholic beverages.
Okay, do I have a motion? Second. Who made the motion?
Robbie.
Robbie, Guard made the motion and seconded the motion. Discussion? Harold, I'd ask if anyone wanted to speak on any item that was on the agenda, but I'll give you the opportunity to come forth if you'd like. We do have a, we do have a motion and a second on this.
I hoped it wasn't a foregone conclusion, but I do want to make a presentation on this that I feel obligated to.
Okay.
I know that earlier was last, there was, take this off, earlier last month, the last council meeting, there was no discussion on this to the public, to my knowledge. My name is Harold Tilly. I live at 204 Rockport, Cape Girardeau, Missouri, otherwise known as Twin Lakes Subdivision. I want to thank you for allowing opportunity to speak. I'm here this evening to voice opposition to bill number 17-99, which have approved allow the sale of beer at the West Park Sine Marcus Theaters. I've asked myself why Councilman Zuro made the motion and seconded by Councilman Fox and approved, except the nay vote by Councilman Gunn, and also by Wayne, you weren't here, I don't think, at that time when that occurred. But the rest of the council did say aye. And I can only think of one reason, and that is the new owners are profit-driven, and the council is all too willing to assist in this process. I'd sent two emails to all of you, and hopefully you've been given those emails, but no one had the courtesy to get back with me regarding those emails. Some years ago, then initiative like this would have never been imagined. Now this seems like it's been perceived as commonplace. It occurs more and more all the time. And you're mixing movie patrons with many, at many times, majority of them are under 21, with the sale of beer consumed on the premises. I was under the understanding that no one under 21 is allowed in an establishment serving beer by the drink. Do we now move forward with beer sales at the water park, perhaps the new sports complex? In conclusion, I'd like to remind you of the survey from those folks that elected you. That was from the Southeast Missourian, and it said that there were 572 votes, and this is not statistically valid. However, there are more people that, that called in on this than I've ever seen before. Out of 572 that voted, 72.7% said no. Should beer sales be allowed to be sold at movie theaters? So I think that speaks, to me, that speaks volumes. In an ending, I want to read a speak-out paragraph that I think says, sums this up. "The movie theater needs to really think of all the possible scenarios of selling alcohol before they make a ridiculous and unwise decision. A recovering alcoholic is already bombarded by beer in so many settings. Let someone enjoy a movie without the temptation of alcohol. Also, how is the theater going to determine exactly who is drinking the alcohol? A 21-year-old can buy it. A 14-year-old might be able to consume it. The theater is for watching movies. The bar is for drinking alcohol. Keep them separate. If you want to drink beer, go to a place that sells beer. If you want to go to the movies, go to the movies, eat popcorn, and drink your soda." Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Harold. Now that we've opened that back up, while, keep it open.
Well, I apologize, but I thought when we said it was removed, that meant we weren't going to be talking about it.
Oh, no, it was just removed from the agenda.
May I?
From the consent agenda.
Doug Austin, Cape Girardeau, America. First and foremost, I'm a huge fan of Cape Girardeau and of this body. I encourage you, as you serve, to the best interest of Cape Girardeau. Even when I disagree with you, I'm supportive of this body. And I want Cape Girardeau to remain a place to live, work, play, visit, and raise a family. My father-in-law's favorite saying was, "When is the best time to plant a tree?" Well, the answer is 15 years ago. When is the second-best time to plant a tree? Today. And I, you have the opportunity to plant a tree tonight. A tree for the safety and well-being of our youth. And over the years, that tree will grow into adulthood, continuing to lead Cape as a great place to live, work, play, visit, and raise a family. The Sunday poll, as was mentioned in the Missourian, not that I believe all the Sunday polls that I read, but gave a 72.7% thumbs down to this proposal. The World Health Organization is calling for action to reduce the harmful use of alcohol, which kills 2.5 million people every year. And you're considering beer sales in theaters? Alcohol is the leading cause to all fatal boating accidents. And you're considering beer sales in theaters? We have an alcohol-involved automobile death every 52 minutes. And you're considering beer sales in a theater? 65% of all fatal car crashes are alcohol-related. And you're considering beer sales in a theater? 36% of all pedestrian accidents are alcohol-related. And you're considering beer sales? 18 to 24 years is the single largest group of moviegoers, with 12 to 17 years being the second-largest group. That's 12 to 17-year-old, second-largest group at the theater. And you're considering beer sales there? You must be 21, as I understand it, to enter a bar. Did you know that the first time a kid goes to the movie, 98% of the time, they're three or four years old? And you're considering beer sales? Youth who drank are 7.5 more times likely to use illegal drugs and 50 times more likely to use cocaine. And you're considering beer sales in a theater? Alcohol kills more teenagers each year than all other drugs combined. 2,000 underage drinkers die behind the wheel each year. And you're considering beer sales in a theater? Now's the time for you to take a stand for our young people. Do not allow your personal influence to move them toward alcohol. Move them away from alcohol. Take a stand. Use your influence. Be visible and measurable for the protection of youth, not their destruction. I encourage you, do not put income above your influence. Do not put sales above safety. Use your position as a public servant leader to influence the future of Cape Girardeau, to remain a great place to live, work, play, visit, and raise a family. I urge you to vote no on this amendment.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else to speak on this subject? Anyone else? Okay.
Sure.
We opened it back up, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, residents of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. My name, for the record, is Robert Novak. I'm the vice president of concessions and food and beverage for the Marcus Theater Corporation. Marcus Theater Corporation is based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. I appreciate you all coming here to discuss this matter. I appreciate you as a city council for taking it up as an issue. I appreciate your time, Mayor, when we met about a month ago to discuss this. I just think it's important that everyone understands that the Marcus Corporation and Marcus Theater Corporation understands the brevity of selling alcohol in any environment. We operate movie theaters, hotels, and restaurants throughout the Midwest. We presently sell alcohol in 18 of our major movie theaters. With selling alcohol comes great responsibility. First and foremost, the Marcus Theater Corporation is a family environment. We ensure and take steps to protect that with our guests, with all of our guests. We have specific programs in place that are aimed at families. We offer $5 movie tickets, which we brought with free popcorn here to Cape Girardeau when we purchased the Werenburg Theater chain. We offer Student Thursday for $5 with a free popcorn for any students and faculty. So that, that is to serve both the students of the community, the young students who are high school students, and we have a family environment. It's our job to protect that. When we go to sell alcohol, we do it on a one-ID for one-drink basis. Mayor, if you walked in with your wife and your wife didn't produce an ID, regardless of age, we won't sell your wife a drink. That's our policy, because we understand with selling alcohol comes great responsibility. It's no different than a restaurant. If you go into an Applebee's, they're serving alcohol. I have three young children. I have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old, and a two-year-old. Yes, there are environments that we go into that are restaurants where alcohol is being sold. They're not consuming it. I may choose not to consume it, but I make that choice. But we understand, as responsible citizens and business owners, that there are guests who have requested it, who have made the decision to purchase it, but with that, we put standards in place. I know there's been some questions tonight that have been asked, how do we differentiate? We don't sell our beer in the same cups that we serve our soda cups, our soda. Our soda is served in paper opaque cups that you couldn't see, and you realize that that's a soft drink. All of our beer is sold in translucent cups. So if one of our staff members were to identify that you were walking through there, it would be very apparent that it's an alcoholic beverage. I think it's also important to say that movie theater goers don't consume alcohol like a bar goer would. The nature of going to a movie doesn't necessarily necessitate the need nor the want to get multiple drinks in the setting. Because you pick up a drink, possibly as an alternative to a soft drink, as you enter the theater. You have your beer, you watch your movie, you're not getting up. It's not like a stadium. It's not like if you went to a Cardinals game that there's natural interruptions between innings, a seventh inning stretch and whatnot. There's not vendors going through the auditorium trying to sell more beer. Again, we take great pride in the standards for which we have. We hire an outside agency to audit our own folks. There's a company out there called Bars, and Bars comes into all of our facilities on a monthly basis. Unannounced to us, we pay a service fee. They come in there, they check at the point of sale to make sure that we're ensuing and carting. If they don't, we terminate the employee that day. We take, there's a great amount of seriousness with it when we come into a community, whether it be Cape Girardeau or any of the other communities for which we operate. We want to be good partners. We want to be good citizens. And that's why we're making a large investment to upgrade the theater in Cape Girardeau, and we want to continue to be here to present a great family environment. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
I'd like to paint a picture. I've seen this picture many times. I applaud your company's efforts, but I can guarantee you, from my experience as a law enforcement officer, that there will be exceptions to this rules that you have. Someone will come into the theater, there will be a disturbance. It might not be the first day, it might not be the first month, it might be two or three months later. At some point, there's going to be a major disturbance where somebody who is triggered by the alcohol response, or they may have been drinking previously and they continue to be, it might not be noticeable at first, but this will be the one that triggers a response to something they see on the screen, something they see around them, somebody they're with, who they have a disagreement with, and there's going to be a disturbance. That disturbance is going to cause a response, whether it's from the staff of the theater, that would be the minimal response. If they can't handle it, it's going to be a police response. I've been there. A police response is going to remove that person from the theater, through the lobby, probably. Walt Disney pictures right over here in this theater, number one. Your grandchild, your child, is in the lobby getting their popcorn with Grandma or Grandpa, and they're going to see a belligerent person being removed from the theater. I'm voting no against this.
Other discussion? Okay, go ahead. This is Councilman Gard, who's out of town, but he's on audio here and video over here.
You know, I, this is a, theaters across the country are implementing this to not only expand their revenues, but personally, I don't see this any different than any other form of entertainment. When I take my daughter to Busch Stadium, or I take her to watch a Blues game, it's a form of entertainment. And if we educate our family, there is no issue with this. This is no different than an Applebee's, a Cardinal game, or anything. I get that we're going to have some heartburn with this, but the majority of the families with children that I've talked to don't see a problem with this whatsoever.
Anyone else?
Could I request input from the city manager, as the office that issues liquor licenses, as well as the police chief, their perspective on this change, potential change?
Good question.
Well, I'll speak for, I'll speak for us. We implement based on the ordinance, and obviously, if the exception is given, then this would, this would meet that. We do have, within that, the ability to audit their books to make sure that they have the percentage of non-alcohol sales to enforce that. So from a licensing standpoint, the initial licensing, that would be at enforcement concerns or not concerns?
I would echo that. Does it raise any enforcement concerns from my standpoint?
But I also come from a community that did allow alcohol sales in their theaters, and we never really saw any kind of increase in incidences just based on alcohol being sold. So I do have some experience with that in my past, and it does not, it does not concern me that they'll be allowed to sell alcohol.
This is really an extension of, when they came to us, we, my ordinance have allowed it in bowling alleys. So this is an extension of the sports and the bowling alley to allow theater, because we didn't have theater in the ordinance, and thus, we needed the ordinance to move this at their request, at their remodel request.
So I'll say, I visited a, or saw a movie at a theater in Florida, small town in Florida that served alcohol along with meals, and it was a different kind of experience. I mean, there, it was only one time, so I don't know if they had any other issues, but there were families there, it was a PG-rated film, or no issues whatsoever. I don't see there's substantially difference between a bowling alley and Applebee's, and I think, I think the issue is right, that the theater needs to have controls in place. It sounds like they have an experience across the region doing so. And you're right, people are not going to get up and out to go get another drink, especially because they can't unless they have multiple IDs, in which case, hopefully, the police department will be involved at some point. I don't drink myself, I never have and never will, I won't order a beer there, but it's not going to be a deterrent for me to go to a theater. I've already gone to theaters and seen it not to be a problem. So I think we should try it, and obviously, enforcement is an issue, that's always a way to revoke the license or to have additional checks if there's multiple complaints. You can't stop if someone, if someone is already drunk when they come to the theater, well, they could be drunk and come to church and cause a problem. It's not the fault of that business if someone is already a troublemaker before they enter doors.
Okay? Any other?
This past weekend, I got the opportunity to talk with different people, and I also had the opportunity to go to a movie bar. Went to see Spider-Man, and I got the opportunity to see the setup of the movie theater. And it was nothing no more than going to Applebee's out back, the bowling alley. It was really nice. I would have never, I would have never thought it was that night, and I was very adamant about that, and they wanted me to see so that I can have a clear understanding. And when I left there, I understood that it is, it is, they, it goes back to the parent also, hoping that the parent would be there and do wise by his or her child. It also goes back to that being fair, and if you, we don't shut down our back, and we don't shut down Applebee's and Ruby Tuesday's, Old Charlie's, and just name them, that we got alcohol in every, just about every vendor there is, but we do have an option. That if you don't want to go to that particular movie theater, then you have an option to go to the other one out there by Walmart. I can't think of the name right now, but I do go to the movie. So I, from fairness and being fair with every business that want to open up a business, I'm not for alcohol and children drinking alcohol, yet be correct, but there is a business factor here, and it brings in a different type of business that we're not used to. But it was clean, it was, it was everything that I didn't think it would be, and I'm glad I got a chance to see it, and I will be voting for it.
Very good.
I just want to echo Councilman Bowen's comments. No one in their right mind is for kids consuming alcohol, but I think they have a lot of safeguards in place. And, you know, for those of you who are just totally against your kids going anywhere they have alcohol, do they go to Seymour baseball games in Capitol Hall Park when they serve alcohol? Do they go to Cardinal games, go to any baseball games? Or anywhere they go, they're going to be somewhere in their life, they're going to, they're going to be confronted with people around them that are drinking, and it's their personal choice and education of their parents and their grandparents to make the right decision. I don't want to deny, you know, somebody the right to be able to compete with, they're going to serve food and pizzas and everything else, and you're, they want the right to be able to compete and have a family come and have a meal and watch a movie in a much more comfortable setting. It's no different than going to a ballgame, Harold. You go to Cardinal games, you're surrounded by people drinking, and believe me, they don't check IDs there. I've never seen them check an ID at a ballgame. You got much more likely of an underage kid drinking at a ballgame than you got in a movie theater. And they drink a lot more at a ballgame. So to me, it's, I think it's the right decision.
I like the, in the presentation when they met, I liked the safeguards, and I like the fact that they, people will not get in the middle of a movie and go back out and get more to drink. Very subtle, my. Be more likely to happen at a bowling alley than it would at a movie theater, to me. Any other comments? We have a motion and a, and a second, and I think, Clerk, let's do a roll call vote, if you would, please.
Chuck Moore. Probably Guard. Hi.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next. Eric, number 10.
Form of 17-109, a resolution authorizing applications to the Delta Regional Authority created placemaking pilot initiative for a placemaking public art exhibit and authorizing city manager to execute all necessary grant program, Doc.
I would like to get a motion and a second, and then we'll have discussion.
I'll move it.
Okay, moved by Fox. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Guard. Okay, discussion. And I'll open. I probably, some of the cause of this being on the agenda. I remember back, we, I was on Vision 2000 back in the 80s, and we wanted to reclaim a, a name and an identity for Cape Girardeau, and we chose to re-identify ourselves as the City of Roses. And we were all excited about that. And we spent a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of sweat reclaiming ourselves as a city, as the City of Roses. And it worked for a while. The, the thing that made it fail is the continual upkeep of the plants and the roses. And if it wouldn't have been for former Councilman Melvin Gatley, I would have died to death earlier. And I think I see some heads nodding out there. And I am interested in reclaiming or making a new identity for our city, particularly in the downtown area, particularly in the downtown areas. We continue to develop Old Town Cape. We continue to revitalize and enhance and add excitement, not only for our citizens but for our visitors. We've done it through the efforts of Tim Blotner, a lot of efforts with Tim Blotner, with Murros. A few years ago, and I'll preface this by saying I'm anywhere but an artist. But we began a series of annual sculptures on Broadway. I think we're in our fourth series now, is that right, Marla? Fourth series of that. Been very successful. Changed out every year at very little cost. There have been, people think we got a lot of cost involved, but very little cost involved with that. Fourth series. As a result of that, the Southeast Missourian bought a sculpture. Rick Hetzel has a sculpture on, a little further west on Broadway. Adam Kidd, as they redo their station at West End, is adding a sculpture. In conjunction with the department at the university that I was very excited for training for the students, we participated with the university and installed today the sculpture at the Roundabout at the River Campus. To me, it's beautiful. So this presented, this sculpture was presented to me earlier in the year as a, as a, an opportunity for the southern part of Main Street, and not Broadway, but Main Street. I liked the idea, and I shared it with quite a few people, but it really didn't go anywhere. And as late as a week ago, in talking to Mark Bliss, I said, you know, everybody, not everybody, but people liked that idea, and it kind of went through the Old Town Cape and kind of went through the Public Art Committee, and, but we didn't have any funding. I said, it's going to be really hard to do this without any funding, so I thought it was going away. And lo and behold, the next day, we had an opportunity through Delta Regional for a grant. Usually, Delta Regional grants are for jobs. This one, this grant availability is to enhance downtown, whether it be public art, whether it be anything to enhance Main Street and downtown. So it fit in, and I got that call from Marla at Old Town Cape, and I thought, this is an opportunity for half of those funds. Where are the other halves going to come from? Because it's a 50-50 match. I would be hesitant to, to apply for that grant without some collateral saying, well, you've got a place that we can match it. So we came with the thought through staff and Old Town Cape of using the Riverfront Fund, and that's what this resolution does. I've talked to a councilman, I didn't lobby any councilmen one way or another, I want all the, all the discussion to ensue. But with, with half of this funded, I think some even private monies could be sought for some of the rest of it. But I didn't want to let it hang out that we, probably for the grant, we get the grant, and now we don't have the balance of the funds. We don't really know quite the exact total yet to do, and it's, it's right upon us in a short period of time. So that's why I'm supporting, supporting this, and this is why this is on item 10 that's been removed from the consent agenda. I appreciate you, Council, and giving me the opportunity to kind of share this from the beginning, from my standpoint, so I'll open it up for conversation from the rest of Council.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Gard.
I was just, after looking at this, and, you know, I think sometimes we forget that, you know, the Riverfront region, you know, and that agreement with Isle was designed specifically for opportunities like this, improvement, economic or public purposes, so I support this as well.
Councilman Fox. I'm all, you know, I'm like Harry, I'm sure not an artist, but I really enjoy public art, and I enjoy the changes of the art on Broadway, and I change the fact that a lot of people like it, and a lot of people have commented that it really has improved the entrance to our downtown corridor, and I think it's a big plus for our city. However, I'm not really, right now, with all the other things that we need in our city, in our downtown area, willing to commit public funds to support it. I would be in favor of seeing if we can obtain the grant and raise private funds to pay the other half of it. And I don't know if that's possible with applying for a grant. If you get the grant, which you may or may not do anyway, you've always got, you have the right to refuse the money if you don't raise a private fund to match the other half. But that's just my two cents.
So I'm somewhat ambivalent about this particular project. I think the mayor mentioned the, not only the high visibility, but the very low cost of our primary public art process, and I think it's been a positive for the downtown, for Broadway in particular. If I think about my highest priorities for downtown, it's probably not this particular sculpture. And so I worry that on the cusp of a new comprehensive plan with lots of uncertainty about the directions we need to go and trying to incorporate more areas adjacent to downtown into this broader vision, that this may not be the right time or the right project for this kind of expenditure. And I'm not sure I feel, would feel good about entering a grant, committing to it, and then withdrawing later. I think we should either enter in good faith and plan on spending the money or not do it. And since we don't have any commitments other than our own money, I can't support it at this point on some, on some possibility. It's not to say it's not a worthy project. I'd be thrilled if someone came along or wrote a check for it. I just don't think that should be the taxpayers at this point, for the Riverfront Fund, for the Riverfront Fund, through this process. I'm, I hate, on my last night on city council, to disagree with Old Town Cape, but unfortunately, I'm going to at this point, I have to do so. I can't be supported.
Charlie?
When it comes down to the taxpayer, I figure, I don't know how I feel about it. If it's going to put a burden on them, I'm not.
Okay.
I agree with Councilman Bowen. I, if private funds were available, I'd applaud this, but with... I, if private funds were available, I'd applaud this, but without a guarantee that those monies are available, I see no point in going after a grant. Well, we would have to match it with public funds, and I'm not ready to spend public funds on this particular project out of the Riverfront Fund personally.
I stated to Mark Bliss publicly, got it in the paper even, that I wasn't going to go out and knock on doors for this whole project, as much as I believe in it. But with this coming, I can see myself going, knocking on doors for half of it. I don't, we don't have time to do that pre, and I'm uncomfortable doing that grant without having some kind of backup in place and collateral in place to do that. So while I think we can get, I can't guarantee it, I'm not going to write the check. I will write a check, but I won't write the check for half, but I think that's, that's entirely possible to do, but I, I would not be in favor of writing the grant without some collateral to, to match it. I think that's not good fiduciary responsibility. So that if, if we're ready to vote, that's fine. If anybody wants to amend the, amend the motion to include just private, we'll go to work on it, but we don't have, we don't have time to do it now.
How much time is there? When's this grant going to be?
When's it going to be done?
Well, it was supposed to be, originally, when we sent the information over, we found out it was supposed to be due this Monday, the actual grant, not today, a week from today.
A week from today.
But yeah, Friday, the deadline was extended to August 21st. Can I make just a couple clarifications? Do you mind, Mayor?
Sure. What did I say wrong?
No, you didn't make any, no, you didn't say anything wrong. No, I just wanted to clarify, number one, that the, that the, the grant is up to $30,000, and so I, I'm not sure what information you had, but we weren't asking necessarily for the full, that full amount. It would just be up to that, and so we anticipate that it would be much less than that, and that, you know, when we were made aware of this opportunity, it is, as the mayor said, a placemaking grant, which the Delta Regional Authority doesn't normally do, and we just saw it as an opportunity to leverage some additional dollars into the community, and we were willing to take the time to, to research it and write the grant if the city wanted to participate with it, and we were required to send somebody to a two-day workshop, we did that, we've done everything we could do to qualify for the grant to this point, and so we just feel like it's an opportunity for the community to do something that's tangible for the downtown, but it, you know, at the end of the day, it is your job to decide where that fund should be used, so.
So what's the date now? I didn't, I didn't know we had an extension.
Yeah, I just, just found out. I was out of town last week, and then I came in this morning. It had been extended to August 21st.
So we got a month.
Almost, to write the, to write the grant.
Well, you could write the grant.
But we have to do an intent to apply.
Okay.
Sooner than that. I'm not sure what day that is, but much sooner than that.
Okay.
So it, it's an opportunity, and as many of you commented, and ironically, today I was reading, I'm going to a conference on downtown revitalization, and one of the subjects is using art to help build your community, talks about the economic development impact of art and that sort of thing in your, in your community, so, but that was kind of ironic. But again, we just saw it as an opportunity, and my board was willing to allow us to take the time to write the grant, but the city does have to be, the requirement is that the city does have to be the applicant, and then we have to have the 50% match.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayor, would you entertain a motion to table pending finding more additional information about community support, or do you want to just vote regardless tonight?
Why don't we?
Can I, can we amend this with the idea that if we can find private matching funds?
You could amend it also, but you, we could postpone it to August 7th and work on it between now and August 7th, both the grant and some solicitation, and see where we were at the August 7th meeting. That might be the best way, rather than.
With this new information, I would move to postpone, pending additional information and potential additional support for it.
Okay.
Can I also ask?
Do it.
Is there a second?
I need a second first.
Second.
Second.
First. Okay, we got a second. Okay, go ahead.
Can I also ask, the funding for this thing has been all over the scale, almost everywhere from.
You mean the cost?
The cost, the cost of this thing.
Well, and that's because originally, the, there was a very, kind of a rough estimate of what it might cost, but that didn't include all of the costs, and so we're trying to nail down exactly what those additional costs would be, things like site work and engineering, some of the things weren't included in the original rough estimate that.
Yeah, we got some work to do there, yeah.
Right, and so that's why it.
Is there a way that we could get some of these costs accurately before August 7th?
We're working on that.
And if need be, maybe there's a way, instead of having the rails to eight or 10 feet high, you could lower them like to six feet or something and lower the.
Well, that's an artistic decision that I would not be able to make, but I, I mean, I'm sure there are ways.
I mean, you're much, you're, you're much more likely to get, if the whole thing costs $30,000 and you apply for a $15,000 grant, you're much more apt to raise $15,000 than you are $25,000. So if we can be more accurate in our, in our costs.
And we got work to do there, because we, frankly, it's been shoved because we thought it was not going to go anywhere because of funding, until this came.
Right, until, right, the initial, the initial proposal didn't include all the costs, and it was just kind of a rough estimate, and so until this opportunity came forward, and, and again, when it first came forward, we, it wasn't that obvious that this would be the, the project. We sent somebody to a workshop to really kind of vet what were they looking for and what project we had in our community that would fit the best to give us the best chance of, of bringing that money here. So it's just been, you know, less than a couple weeks since we've determined that would be the best project.
Just some clarification.
So we got a motion in a, in a second, and we've got two weeks of work on, working on the, on the grant, and working on the cost, and working on the money. But I think postponement is the right.
There are other, there are other groups, the Arts Council, there are other arts groups around town.
Well, and it may be, as Sammy says, I like it, but I'm not going to fund it, you know, and if so be it, so be it, but I think postponement is the right, right way to go. We'll address it again on August 7th, so with no more discussion, do I have a vote on the postponement?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Do we, we don't need a motion or vote to send the intent to apply, do we? We can send an intent without it. So we don't actually apply for the grant?
We can send the intent.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure. You haven't done that yet, right?
No.
Yeah, but you can do that.
We can do that.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion and a second to postpone. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. We'll go to work back to August, August 7th. Good discussion. Thank you, Council. New Ordinance is number 12, Bill number 17 dash 106, an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 27 Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding travel trailer camps and mobile home parks. First reading.
So moved.
So moved by Fox, seconded by Bowen. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Number 13, Bill number 17 dash 107, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding building codes. First reading. So moved by Bowen.
Second.
Seconded by Fox. And any discussion?
We had a good discussion of this at the study session. I think it's important that we continue with these updates to the park.
Yep, very good. Any other discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Number 14, Bill number 17 dash 112, an ordinance approving the record plaid of Route K North Surd subdivision. First reading.
So moved.
So moved by Guard, and seconded by Fox. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 15, Bill number 17 dash 113, an ordinance approving the record plaid of Deer Creek Ridge subdivision. First read.
So moved.
So moved by Fox.
Second.
Seconded by Guard. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And Bill number 17 dash 108, this is a, an emergency bill to solidify a five-year renewal for the fixed route bus for the City of Cape Girardeau, as we discussed in the study session, so I'll be reading it three times. Bill number 17 dash 108, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Cape Girardeau County Transit Authority to provide fixed route bus service for the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and renewal for up to a total of five years. Bill number 17 dash 108, an ordinance authorizing city manager to execute agreement with the Cape Girardeau County Transit Authority to provide fixed route bus service for the City of Cape Girardeau during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, for renewal up to a total of five years. Bill number 17 dash 108, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Cape Girardeau County Transit Authority to provide fixed route bus service for the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri during the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018, and renewal for up to a total of five years.
So moved.
So moved by Moore. Seconded by Fox. Discussion?
I just wanted to add that after looking at their financial audit, they look very strong over two times, they have service coverage, great cash, and accounts are sustainable. Thank you to them for getting us that audit.
And the ridership is encouraging too, continues to go up, averaging over 7,000 rides a month now, as that, that moves on, so that's providing a very needed service. It took a while to grow that, but a very needed service in the, in the city, and glad to be able to support that. Now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number 17, appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, as we discussed at the study session, that recommendation is for Mary Darby. Okay, have a motion by Bowen.
Second.
Seconded by Gunn. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And at number 18, appointment to the Public Library Board of Directors, and that recommendation is for Reka Patterson.
So moved.
So moved by Gunn, and seconded by Guard. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Is there any other business come before us?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. We had let Lanzotti do his last one by Bowen. Second.
Second.
Seconded by Gunn. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Best wishes, Wayne. We are adjourned.